Good evening and welcome to the Work Session Business Meeting of the Putnam Valley Board of Education of October 4th, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to begin with the resolution on recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the minutes of the business meeting of September 20th, 2018, and the special business meeting of September 25th, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move right into presentations. And are we starting right with the auditors? So nobody's in front of them to steal their thunder.
No thunder stealing.
Yes, we have our external auditor, Chris Kopp, is going to present to us from the audit committee which reviewed the audit tonight. And Chris Kopp is our external auditor and will review the financial condition of the district.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to review the audit report. Is that better?
Great.
Okay. Again, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time out of your meeting to go over the results of your 1718 school year fiscal report. And I'd like to thank Jill and her staff for all the assistance they gave us during the course of the audit. Again, without their assistance and their professionalism, you can never accomplish what's needed to be done in a short period of time that you have. So what we're going to go over tonight very quickly is some of the overview and requirements, required communications. We'll review your 2018 general fund, some highlights. We'll look at your major revenue streams. There's a chart in there of your five-year history of those major revenues. We'll look at some expenditures, again, five-year history. What's important to you is your five-year fund balance and show you how your fund balance has been over the last few years. But you do operate some other funds, so I'll just give you a quick snapshot of those. And then we'll look at your debt service. And then there was new Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75, which modified your reporting this year, so I'll just go through that very briefly. So management's responsibilities. You need to select and implement accounting policies that are appropriate for a district. You have to look at the size and the complexity. You have to present your financial statements in accordance with the U.S. CAP generally accepted accounting principles. Most importantly, you have to maintain effective internal controls over your assets and your transactions. And you have to be in compliance with laws, regulations, and provisions of all your contracts. And we'd like to think the most important one is provide us with all the financial records so we can do the audit. And then for the board, you set the proper tone at the top. And what we mean by that is, example is tonight's public meeting, allowing the public to come in and if they have any issues. So we read your board minutes to get a flavor for what's gone on during the course of the year because it may influence the direction that we do the audit. Our responsibilities first and foremost are deliverables, and that's to issue the independent auditors' report. And we're very happy to say that you received an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that an accounting firm, an auditing firm, can provide a client. It's also known as a clean opinion. We also look at your extra classroom activity. We have to have the required communication to those charged with governance, that's you. We also issue a management letter with some recommendations on some things that came up during the audit that maybe could be done a little differently or better. During the course of the audit, we do interview individuals to see if there's any fraud or illegal acts. And we're very happy to say that during the interviews, there were none disclosed. But we also have to point out that that's not the purpose of doing an audit, is to disclose fraud, it's to review the financial numbers. We didn't encounter any difficulties in the conduct of the order. Audit, there were no uncorrected misstatements, and by that we mean journal entries. At the, during the course of an audit, there's always going to be an adjusting journal entry that's come across, and everyone was posted by your finance department, there were no disagreements. The timeline that we had to conduct the audit was, we came in in June for a couple days with a team of people to test some of your transactions. Then the field work was July, a week of July 9th, and by September 20th, we had finished the report. So this is your general fund, the main operating fund of the district. So you see we have the five columns up there, and we have the original budget that was passed by the board at the beginning of the school year. We have your final budget after any modifications to that budget during the course of the year. Then we have the actual results, and then in the far right-hand column, the variance with the final budget. So if we start on this schedule and we look three numbers up from the bottom, you'll see about $2,576,000 in brackets. So when you adopted that budget, if it was a perfect world, you would have had an operating loss of $2,756,000. And the reason you did that was you appropriated some of your prior-year surpluses in order to apply them against the tax levy so you could stay in compliance with the CAP and to reduce the burden on your taxpayers. That money came from some various reserves that you had put out there for the purpose of paying tax certs and employee retirement. So that helped you cushion the tax increase. Your final budget, you can see that you didn't have to dip any further into your reserves. That number stayed the same. So how did we actually do? If you start again the third number up, you actually only utilized $568,000. So you did about $1 million better than budget once you take into account the encumbrances. Encumbrances are purchase orders that came in at the end of the year where the items weren't received yet, so they're not payable because you don't have them, but they overlap school year. So that $800,000 rolls forward to the next year, but it shows as a budget variance. So instead of utilizing fund balance as much as you wanted, you only utilized $500,000, which left more for you to use in future years. How did you accomplish that? Revenue was about $280,000 better than budget, again, on these major revenue sources. You came in, under-earned your tax revenue by $55,000. The reason for that is during the course of the year, taxpayers file assessments, reductions, and they're called SCARs. The current portion goes against your taxes. So you had a few settlements there. Non-property taxes are sales taxes that are collected on behalf of the district. But the real increase was on your use of money in property. You can see that most of your variance is on that line, $218,000. What that is, is a reflection of the interest that you earned during the course of the year. When you put your budget together, the interest rates were extremely low. Over the course of the year, you were able to get more interest because they raised the prime, so you made more money than you had anticipated. So overall, you came in about $280,000 over on these major revenues. The next slide is just a quick five-year history, and I'll only talk about the tax one because that's probably your largest. You can see that when you take into account the star reimbursement from the state, in 2014, you levied $35.8 million. Now you're at $35.7. You're actually down $90,000 over that course of time. So you've kept the taxes very flat in the community, and as people come off the star, that just means, you know, somebody younger maybe moved in or incomes changed, so you don't get as much star reimbursement, and they go back up to the property tax line. But overall, you can see your taxes relatively flat over the course of the years. I must have hit the button. These are your expenditures. Again, I picked some of the major categories. You have many, many departments in the school budget, probably 60 departments, so I just picked a few that account for the bulk of your expenditures. And again, we'll talk about the variance. In general support, you had a positive variance of about $242,000. And most of that is because you did some moving of departments this year, and you allocated some money towards it, and you didn't expend all of that money towards that allocation. And in addition, you saved some salary money throughout the administration. You had vacant positions, you had people retiring, you hired at a lower salary, that accounted for a little bit of it. You can see your teaching for regular school, which is your largest line in the budget, came within $89,000. That's very close budgeting. So again, that savings is usually, again, from a teacher retiring and you hire somebody at a lower salary. And then you had a big savings on your program for students with disabilities where you had savings of about $500,000. That number's a very difficult number for you to put together in a budget because each of those students can cost anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000, over $100,000 per student. And you really have to budget worst-case scenario because if you under-budget that line, where are you going to get that extra $100,000? So we see many schools have a variance in that line to the positive because you have to plan for the worst case. Other than that, you can see that all your budget lines are very close. Here's the five-year history on those, and again, you can see on your teaching line, it's grown from $12 million to about $14,200,000. And obviously, the bulk of that is salaries, and that takes into account all union contracts and raises over that five-year period. You can see your students with disabilities, the programs with students with disabilities, is actually down slightly from 2014, from 7.3% down to 6.6%, but it's pretty consistently around 7.5% this year, seems to be a little bit of a variance. And all the others have remained fairly steady except for the one big one, health insurance. You can see health insurance is costing the district about $600,000. That line goes up every year, and we know it. You're part of the night shift program, you don't control that, and it's been a real burden on a lot of districts. The good news on there, as you can see, your teachers' retirement has finally started dropping. I think it peaked in 2015. And due to the returns on the stock market and how they calculate the rates, you've actually seen a drop in both your ERS rates and your TRS rates over the last two or three years. In fact, if you look at your balance sheet, you actually have, the teachers' retirement system is now overfunded at the state level. It's at 100.66%. So it's slightly overfunded, which is very good. And the ERS, which is the smaller one for you, but the bigger for other municipalities, is at 98.4%, which again, is probably in the top five in the country as far as funding goes. I mean, you read horror stories about New Jersey, Illinois, always battling over the funding of their pensions, but New York State's is very solid. This is your fund balance. This is what you have to work with when you put your budget together. We'll start with 2018. And you can see the first number on the bottom, 9.7, that's your total surplus. And that surplus is about 20% of your next year's budget. And that's right in line with what I've seen at almost all the school districts I've been presenting to this year, is about 19% to 20%, so you're right about the average. Above that line, you see $2,522,000 called unassigned. New York State limits you to 4% surplus on that line, and you're right there. And that's what you have for emergencies, that's what you have for use in subsequent years' budgets. And you can see, $2 million is not a very large cushion for you to have for fund balance. If we go up to restricted, the board through the years has created some reserves to help mitigate future exposure. So we'll talk about the bigger one, tax certs. Everybody, every municipality, every school district gets hit with tax certs. You've put away $467,000 to help so that when one of these comes in, you don't have to bond it, you have the funds put aside, you don't have to budget it. In fact, this year, you drew down 500 to help with your 1819 budget. That money can only be used to pay the certs, and if it's not used, it actually gets returned right back to that line. So you didn't have to borrow any, raise any tax money for your certs so far this year. You also have a line there called Employee Benefits and Accreted Liberties. Contracts call for payments when people retire for unused vacations, sick, holiday, whatever contract costs were. So again, you have some funds put aside to cover that exposure. The next big one is the retirement system, $1.8 million. And again, over the years, as you've heard when you budget process and want to present, that retirement bill had been rising by double digits over the years. So by you putting away money in that reserve, you helped cushion over those years that increase. And again, you didn't need current tax dollars, you were able to use some of your reserves to cushion it. And then the last number in the restricted section is future capital projects. You have about $1.4 million put aside to help the next time you embark on a capital project, to help reduce the bonding cost. So you have this $1.4 million, which means you'll have to bond that much less and thus save interest over the course of the project. As I said, you do operate some other funds. You have a debt service fund, you have a capital projects fund, school lunch, special purpose. So your debt service fund is available to pay your debt. So what happens is you raise the money to pay your debt, you transfer it over to the debt service fund, and they pay your interest and principal. And there, you have a $5 million surplus because over the years, the money that you borrowed earned interest, and that money is restricted to pay down the debt, can't be used for any other purpose. You have a capital projects fund, and that accounts for all your various projects, and you do have $6.8 million of a surplus there, but that money is designated for your energy performance contract, and so it can only be used for that purpose. You have a school lunch fund, which operates your cafeteria, and you have a special purpose fund that captures donations to the school or special allotments of money from individuals for scholarship or for other programs at the school, and you have about $90,000 left in that fund. You can see as far as debt goes, the district does not have much debt. You only have two bonds outstanding. You have two refunding bonds, which means that while the interest rates were low in '14 and '15, you were able to take advantage of that low interest rate, and you paid off some of your higher debt and substituted lower-interest debt. And you see that currently outstanding is only $9.2 million, and below that is the amortization schedule. And two-thirds of your debt will be gone in five years. Again, very aggressive debt repayment schedule, and the balance will be paid off in the next five years. So within 10 years, you'll have no outstanding principal and interest on those bonds. And here's the new change in accounting principle. What happened is that Government Accounting Standards Board, which regulates how you report on your financial statements, and it's a nationwide board, it's not New York, you have what's called other post-employment benefits recorded as an exposure on your financial statements. That's the health insurance for the retirees. And what they do is they calculate it through an actuarial process, and they estimate how much exposure you have. In the past, under GASB 45, which has been in place for nine years, they let you amortize that cost over 30 years, saying, why do we want to put it all on at once? So you've been spreading it out, just like everybody else, over this 30-year window. When they passed the pension disclosure to put pension information in financial statements, they said, well, we did all that in one year, we want all the health insurance on. So what happened is this year, you had to record $57 million liability on your district-wide statement for this exposure. Now, before you panic, there's no way for you to pay that. It's just there for informational purposes, it's an actuarial calculation. You have paid your bill. When you have your night shift bill come in and it covers your retirees, you wrote the check and you've covered it. All this is, is somebody's calculation of what you owe in the future. And currently, under the state and New York regulations, there's no method to fund that. If you were to put money aside now, that money still counts towards your 4% unassigned, and then you couldn't use it for the tax reduction like you've been using it. So there's no reason right now to fund it. And again, I just want to be clear, you've paid your bills, and there's no way for you to put away this money for the future. You're a pay-as-you-go basis, just like every other business, you pay your health insurance, you get the bill. But it is sticker shock when you all of a sudden see a $57 million liability show up in your books that you didn't know about. And that's your financial statements at a snapshot. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. Or if you ever have any questions, I can always come back.
Did I hear Dr. Will say that you met with the audit committee earlier today?
Yes.
Right prior to this meeting?
Right. So Chris explained, broke down all of this to us on the audit committee. We were pleased at our unmodified, the unmodified opinion that we got, which is the highest rating. And so thanks to him and O'Connor Davies, but also to our business office, to Jill and her staff, because like, you know, it's amazing the amount of work that goes in and the amount of knowledge that you have to have about new rules, old rules, new accounting, other accounting. So I mean, it's, as a non-audit person, it's a little bit overwhelming, but I'm really pleased that we have such a great staff and that they've done such a good job that we got this highest rating, so.
And I certainly want to echo that thanks. I want to thank the audit committee, the two of you plus the four people you roped into participating because it's pure volunteer, and it is nice to have representation from our constituency to look over our expenditures. So, and it's important, not even just nice, it's really important. I think the line that I'm the most, I guess not surprised about, happy about, is that our property tax levy has stayed so flat over so many years while we've managed to put a great number of enhancements and improvements into our district. And I think that that speaks again to Dr. Will's and Jill's creativity, using retirements, using changing enrollments, doing, you know, doing a lot of creativity to improve our services without further burdening our taxpayers.
I would like to add that.
Nice to see.
I have been superintendent for many years, and working here has just increased my appreciation for the kind of ethical decision-making, the sense of accountability, the fact that there is constantly the courage of conviction so that everything is done appropriately when it comes to our fiscal situation. And how the fund balance has been husbanded here is really quite remarkable, and therefore, we have the freedom to think about education and what we can do for our students. I think that's the goal, and that has always been Jill's goal. She has really been here to support our educational program. And I can think of so many times when our facilities directors have come to Jill with something that has to be done because they've seen a problem with facilities, and that Jill works with them to make sure that happens. That's, that's a great expense in districts where they find themselves in serious, with serious problems when they don't have the financial wherewithal. And there's always this belief that there is a way that we can work through this, that we can find a way to manage the difficult challenges we face, and with such composure, poise, and a sense of calm deliberation, so I have great appreciation for our treasurer of this school district. Well, and can I just add that not only does our director of facilities and come to Jill with those kinds of things, but she, see, now I've only worked with one district, Putnam Valley, so like I can't compare it to other districts. But she sits on, she attends other committees where principals are explaining their program or where there's a new, we want to try a new educational initiative, which really has nothing to do with her job, but if she doesn't understand it, it's hard for her to realize why it's important that we put that money in the budget or whatever. So she's, she looks beyond the facts and figures and the accounting piece to what our students need. So, and I think that's to be commended, so.
Any other questions about the audit?
Chris, I just want to thank you for the clarity of how you presented what each of these things mean, because the public will, you know, be able to see this and actually get the lesson in a very unbiased, we'll see it as totally unbiased in pointing out the things that this district has done and the position that we're in, so I want to thank you for your clarity.
Thank you. And again, thank you all very much for your time. I know you have other items on the agenda, but we appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much, Chris. Did we do comments from audit committee chairperson?
We did.
That's what I thought.
Two birds, one stone. I'm not calling you birds.
Not that we're killing birds. Exactly.
Good. I can go worse.
One breadcrumb? Two birds, one breadcrumb?
Okay.
Yes, now Mick.
Do you want to introduce the introduction? Okay. So this evening, we planned a presentation by two of our teachers who have been leading some really important initiatives in the area of reading in ELA and the area of math. Both Cheryl Khan and Mick Coleman are passionate about what they do. They have been leading extensive work, working with professional development of our staff, following what's happening at State Ed, and really are instrumental in how we have managed to increase our students' capacity to perform effectively on the required standards-based assessments that we all are responsible for in grades four through eight. And now the state has promulgated new standards, and I think it's very important that the public understand what those standards are and hear from our experts in the field. I don't know who's going to begin, so.
Good evening. I'm Mick Coleman, I'm here with Cheryl Khan, and we are excited tonight to share with the board and the community the new next-generation learning standards in ELA and math.
So there's been a lot of question about what the next-generation standards are. We hope to enlighten everyone tonight. They're basically the Common Core standards that have been delineated, clarified, and collectively focused, especially in ELA. There's a few more differences in math, but basically it's a clarification, not a huge
So how the standards were created, they are the result of a two-year collaboration revision process that took place across New York State. More than 130 teachers, administrators, parents, higher educators use their expertise and experience to make suggestions.
Here's ELA.
So the question's going to be, what are those changes? And this is a short list, the next page explains a little bit further. But it has the same general organizational structure of the Common Core standards with a few minor changes. The major strands are still the same, reading, writing, speaking and listening, and language. And then the two main things I can highlight on this page, the two biggest changes for ELA, was the merging of the reading for information and reading for literature standards, which were basically the same strands with just different content. So now, instead of it being, you know, RL2 and RI2 for literature and information, it's just R2, reading 2. So it certainly makes sense if you're going to teach a standard, let's say, theme and central idea, you would want to teach it across many different kinds of texts, not in isolation. And then the other major change was just the revision of the writing standards, just for clarification and updating, frankly. It's been seven years since we adopted the Common Core standards, and, you know, things always kind of evolve and change a bit. So on the next slide, the key vocabulary, just to keep in mind, the learning standards are the individual standards, but the anchor standards are the main standards, like I was just saying. Like if I say reading standard 2, that's the same standard for kindergarten through 12th grade. So for instance, reading standard 2 is central ideas and themes, so in kindergarten, that means retelling of stories and finding facts in articles. In third grade, would, students would determine a theme and then explain how it's supported through the details of the story. And then in seventh grade, the students would still be determining a theme, but they would be analyzing its development over the course of the text. So it's the same general idea that gets more complex as the students get older. And then the lifelong practices of readers and writers, they've really, they've added the thinking piece, so instead of just writing and listening and speaking, it's really heavy in thinking. Reading widely to build that background knowledge is really important, and making connections among all the things that you read, as well as your own life and anything else you experience. And then I mentioned the strands, they're the same, the reading, writing, speaking and listening, and language. And then the bottom, the range of student reading experiences and text complexity. What's interesting to note is that they have really separated out each grade level to be much more specific about what reading levels are appropriate at every grade level instead of a range of grade levels like they had in the past. Like for instance, they had sixth through eighth grade kind of lumped together, and as a former sixth-grade teacher, I can tell you there's a huge difference between a sixth-grade reader and an eighth-grade reader. So to separate it out really helps teachers make sure that they are challenging their students without hindering their enjoyment of reading by making the text too difficult.
So some of the changes in math, the high school standards now will be listed by course. So there'll be Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, where they were before listed by topics. Some of the standards have moved from one grade to another. Specifically, sixth grade is now getting a number of standards from seventh grade, so we have to make adjustments for that. There are new standards, and also there are, they removed some of the standards to reduce redundancy among grade levels. Some more changes, they clarified the existing standards to more clearly identify the expectations of the standards. And they've also added additional notes and illustrations in an effort to support the educators. educators. They've added the term explore. So a concept can be explored in class without the, without mastery of it or it being assessed. So they're exploring the topic. They've kept the rigor of the standards and they've added a glossary of verbs associated with the next-generation standards of math. So how are the new standards different from previous standards? The new standards clarify vague or confusing wording in both ELA and math. They make adjustments, adjustments have been made to ensure that the standards are appropriate for our youngest learners. And they've also added an in-depth guidance for pre-K and second-grade teachers. So we have a timeline. And last May, we started introducing the teachers to the next-generation standards. And so now here in the fall of 18, PD, professional development, is in place for the teachers. And what we're going to do this year with professional development is look at the new standards. Look at our curriculum to make sure that it matches. And if we have to make adjustments, we can make adjustments. Also, look at both the way we assess and our assessments. And if we have to make adjustments to our curriculum maps, this is the time to make those adjustments. Ultimately, what we're trying to do, if you look at Phase Three, we're trying to be prepared for September of 2020. And then ultimately, we're trying to be prepared for the spring of 2021, that same year where now these new standards are going to be assessed by New York State. And the other slides are just, you know, we've placed these slides here. So if the community member or the board want to find where the information, they could find this information here. And both, if you look at this one, working with State Ed, both Cheryl and I have had opportunities to go up and work with State Ed, to work directly with them, with the, working with the standards and working with assessments and working with creating questions. And we would, you know, like other teachers in Putnam Valley, so also participate in that. Are there any questions?
Just a quick one, it's going, um, you know, we already remember, and I can't believe when you said seven years ago, you know, it doesn't seem like that long ago. But the assessment occurred almost simultaneously with the implementation. And although there are some phases, in fact, full implementation only happens the same school year as the assessment. Are there, is there similarities enough that we're not going to see that same, oh my god factor?
Well, I think though, we're starting off, you know, at least two years before. So we're going to be ready. So this fall, as it says here, winter of 18, we're starting in the fall of 18. So we're going to go through the curriculum. We're going to go through the standards and we're going to make those adjustments now. So if we have to develop lessons, we're going to develop them now. So we're really in Putnam Valley at Phase Two.
Okay.
The teachers are aware of it, and now we're going to start to get prepared for Phase Three.
So a fifth grader taking the assessment in spring 2021 would have actually had,
100% ready.
Would have had some of that early work in their fourth grade year.
Well, and Mick just made an excellent point. We really want teachers to get involved in going to State Ed to learn about the test, learn about what the questions look like, learn about what they expect the student responses to look like, because that's the way we're going to know if we're really on the mark.
Right.
Because we feel like we are, but that's the only way to truly know.
Yeah. I just, I just want to point out that these changes, although we're correct, we're two years in advance, we certainly have a head start in making sure that the teachers are aware of what the changes are. These changes are not nearly as substantial as the move to Common Core was seven years ago. So although there are some revisions and some improvements they've made, these are very much laid on top of the existing standards. So there will not be a huge learning curve for our teachers. It's more of making sure that the right content's being taught in the right grades and they're using the right vocabulary and.
Teaching across different areas.
Exactly. But I have the utmost faith in these two teachers to make sure that everyone's ready.
Now, at the same time that the schedule feeding in, you've got students that are going to be taking what the old exam is and learning the new stuff at the same time.
Well, well, we're going to take the old test in 2019, in 2020. We are going to, and 2020, of September, that curriculum's going to be in place. So we're going to do that new next-generation curriculum that year, and they're going to be assessed at the end of that year.
Okay.
So there isn't that.
But there is going to have to be some mapping between what was and what will be in that transition year, right?
And I think that affects mostly math. As you were talking about different topics in the grade levels, for ELA, there really isn't a change of expectation. If anything, like I said, it's just more clarified for ELA. But math.
Then we prepare.
You know, I think what we've seen over the last few years is that as students come into kindergarten and have those standards taught and the teachers are well acquainted with them, and then the students move on, we see the ability and the capacity grow. And that's why our third and fourth grade scores demonstrate that. And, and the, also the inclusion of many more students in the, you know, actually participating. But that develops confidence in everyone, in the teachers and in the parents, because we've started with these standards in mind. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, can't think of anything else. Thanks very much.
Again, these folks are very, very passionate about what they do. They're committed, they're dedicated, and.
And this PowerPoint is going to be on the website?
Yes, yes. All of this is on the website.
So our students are in good hands. Okay. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here this evening, I'm going to take you through a presentation that I am currently giving in my sleep. I've done it so many times. So this is a presentation very similar to the presentation we gave at Back to School Nights, as well as other opportunities throughout the last couple of weeks, and I'm sure will be given many more times. So the project, I mean, our title of the presentation is Building Our Students' Future by Reinvesting From Our Past. Just a quick summary of the project and what brought us here today. Over a year ago, we commissioned a facilities planning committee. This committee consisted of teachers, administrators, and community members. And it was really an opportunity to brainstorm, how can we take advantage of what is ultimately a very timely opportunity while still being fiscally responsible? And it was really fun at first. We started brainstorming all the great things we wanted to do. We wanted to connect the buildings. We wanted to build an Olympic-sized swimming pool, maybe a stable for horses, and quickly realized that we were spending way more money than we could and really needed to ground ourselves in what was really current issues that we needed to address. So I highlight some of those issues, and I'll go in more in depth as we go through the presentation. But one area which we thought really needed some attention was our cultural arts spaces, both at the elementary school, but particularly at the middle school. And just a few examples of what the issues are, the cultural arts space here at the middle, sorry, at the middle school next door is too small to really hold any performances. Therefore, all of the performances are moved over to the high school pack. And in terms of space for practice, at the elementary school, the students have access to soundproof lesson rooms to practice their instruments during lessons. And at the middle school, a large number of students come up from the elementary school learning an instrument, and we simply don't have the facilities at the middle school to accommodate these students. That leaves, in some cases, students practicing for their lessons while sitting on the serving line of the cafeteria. The cafeterias and kitchen space are both too small. The cafeteria space means that students eat in shifts. So as a grade level, students moves to lunch, half the students start with recess, the other half eat lunch, and then they switch. That always causes issues in terms of who is with who's friends and we're separating students. So a new expanded cafeteria is something that we're looking at. And kitchen space, many don't realize that our middle school lunch is actually cooked here at the high school and wheeled over to the middle school, which certainly limits the offerings for our middle school students. Innovative and flexible classroom space, we'll talk a lot about that, but we currently have core academic subjects taking place in non-core academic classrooms. And that's an issue, and we certainly need more flexible space to support our curricular program. Health and Wellness Center is something that we'll dive into, but it's really to create both a physical and academic space for our students. Infrastructure upgrades throughout the middle school, which remains very eerily familiar to when it was built. And a creation of a learning commons at the middle school, which is a modern library. And our middle school currently does not have a library for our students. Just some of the economics of the project. We estimate the principal cost of the project to be approximately $14.8 million. For anyone who's seen this presentation over the last few weeks, that's slightly higher. We actually got new quotes for the windows at our middle school that were higher than expected. So we slightly increased the project capital cost. Our estimated state aid, there's sort of been two numbers around in the community, so I just want to take this opportunity to clarify the difference between the two. The 6.3 number, which we actually will now go up slightly, that now that the project cost is slightly higher, is the aid we'll get back that includes both the aid on the project principal as well as the aid on the interest. The other number which we've shared is the 4.9, which again, I imagine will go up now that the price of the principal cost of the project's slightly higher. And that 4.9 represents the aid we get back in relation to the principal cost alone. So both numbers are accurate, doesn't change the bottom line. We're just trying to be as transparent as possible. If you want to look at the aid number just based upon principal cost, 4.9 or slightly higher. If you want to look at the aid number based upon the total cost of the project, which includes interest, slightly higher, 6.3. To offset the increase in the cost for the, to cover the windows in the middle school, we'll be taking $610,000 from our capital reserve fund. That's actually, the entire purpose of that fund is to offset costs for capital improvements. The project will be financed over 15 years. And really, what the highlight of the whole thing is, the whole project, is that everything that I'm going to share with you this evening can be accomplished without any increase in our taxes. And that was a non-negotiable amongst the facilities planning committee. Whatever we decided to do or recommended to be done had to fall under the constraints, within the constraints of having no increase in taxes. So we hear a lot about the relationship between schools and home values. So I did a little research, I found three different research studies. I found one study that found that homes in desirable school districts are priced at $50 higher per square foot, that homes in desirable school districts are 49% more expensive, and that 91% of potential home buyers consider school boundaries as one of their primary determining factors. We're certainly at a crossroads as a district. We have, as I mentioned before, this opportunity to reinvest our debt and improve our instructional program. But we also have the option to do nothing and to allow that debt service to go back into the tax rolls. But there are some adverse effects if the latter were to happen. One is our debt service is directly related to the amount of taxes we can levy. So it's part of the formula that determines our tax levy cap. So the projects, many of which are the middle school, still need to be done. And in fact, if we have to do a matter of our general fund budget, we no longer get any state aid back on those projects. And our general fund budget is already very tight, which means that if we're forced to fund improvements or maintenance on buildings, that money has to come from the same pool that funds our programs and staffing. So we ultimately could find ourselves in a situation where we're forced to maximize our ability to levy taxes up to the tax levy cap, as well as potentially competing interests between staffing programs and maintaining our buildings. So a quick rationale of the project, I'll skip the 1935 tour, even though it's my favorite, but that's when our elementary school was built, and it's beautiful, and it's had some major renovations over the years. But we were going to dive right into 1972, which is when our middle school was built. Part of the fun of preparing for this presentation was digging through the archives, and I found lots of old fun stuff. So this is the original rendering of the, of the middle school from 1972. I have to be honest, it looks better in the picture. But if we dive down into 1972, things were obviously very different. So just some quick facts from 1972. Dow Jones topped 1,000. Ford Pinto was the most popular car, costing $2,078. Gallon of gas was 55 cents, not bad. But the work environment in the 70s was certainly very different than the work environment we have today. Individuals sat at desks, normally in rows facing forward, awaiting direction. On the right, we have a picture of some modern technology being used from 1972. And our learning environment's very much mimicked what the, what the work environment was, and students sat at desks in rows facing forward, awaiting directions from the teacher. So before we go into modern day, 2018, we'll take a quick stop in the 90s, because who doesn't love the 90s? So our work environment, again, very different. This is the heyday of the cubicle. Now, rather than waiting for directions, we're now sitting still in the same rows, still facing forward, but now we're telling the computers what to do. The learning environment looks remarkably similar to the 70s. We're still sitting in rows facing forward. And other important things happened in the 90s, like I was in sixth grade in Putnam Valley. And if you look at the picture on the right, you'll fully understand why I started shaving my head. So this is our middle school in 2018. But a lot of things have changed in 2018. Our work environment no longer asks individuals to sit in rows and face forward, and it's a much more creative and collaborative space that asks students to think critically to solve problems. So therefore, we think it's important that our learning environments mirror the work environment that our students will be entering. And students need to learn how to be successful in this type of environment if ultimately they're going to be successful in their future work environment. So as I mentioned before, part of the project is a learning commons at the middle school. This is really a modern library. I like to call it an academic place of gathering. And if anyone who's been to the high school, which has a beautiful learning commons, that room is packed every period of the day with students that are either reading, working collaboratively, finishing homework, working with teachers. It's really a place for academic studies to happen. Sorry. So this space would mirror that, it would be a space for circulation, for study. It would also include an additional classroom space, but really serve as a research center. As I mentioned before, our cafeteria and kitchen would have an expanded capacity. This would increase our flexibility to use the space. Movable walls would allow us to partition it off. A new kitchen would allow us to cook food on-site, which would increase our food offerings. And here's a rendering of our existing cafeteria and what it could potentially look like at the conclusion of this project. My cultural arts, it would be an increased viewing area. So again, this is that same space now set up for performance. The pillars that you see in the picture are where the existing walls are. So you would see the wall between the existing cafeteria and the band room and the choral room would be removed, open it up to the exterior wall, which allows to put in windows and bring in some natural light. The existing wall between the cafeteria and the courtyard would be removed, and that's where it would be both part of the cafeteria, as well as our learning commons area would be built in the existing courtyard. So here's a rendering that shows what that, where that work is being done. So again, here's the existing wall that partitions off the cafeteria from the band space. Here's an existing wall that ends the cafeteria and begins the courtyard. So this whole piece right here is the only change in footprint for the building. That would be new construction. I believe it's approximately 4,000 square feet. And part of that square footage is the social commons, the learning commons, and a new flexible classroom here. Sorry. Going back in time. So also included from a cultural arts standpoint, it would be upgraded audio and visual on the stage. So we would do some upgrades to make it more conducive for performances. We would create a new choral space and install new soundproof lesson rooms. And if you look at the picture on the very bottom, that's a picture of our students practicing their saxophones while sitting at the serving line by the cafeteria. So as I mentioned before, the middle school is remarkably familiar to what it was when it was built in 1972, and certainly when I was there in the 90s. So just, it's in desperate need of just some general infrastructure upgrades. So one. We would create a new choral space and install new soundproof lesson rooms. And if you look at the picture on the very bottom, that's a picture of our students practicing their saxophones while sitting at the serving line by the cafeteria. So, as I mentioned before, the middle school is remarkably familiar to what it was when it was built in nineteen seventy-two and certainly when I was there in the nineties. So, just, it's in desperate need of just some general infrastructure upgrades. So, one thing that we would certainly do would be upgrading bathroom facilities. That's an actual picture of a faculty bathroom at the middle school. You may notice you actually physically sit on the sink in order to close the door to use the bathroom. The next picture is a side-by-side comparison of a potential rendering of what the middle school may look like after the project and next to it, what it looks like now. I can't wait for the day that canopy is torn down. Upgrades to our gymnasium, which is really just a facelift. We're not changing the square footage of the gymnasium. But these pictures show the old wooden planks that are broken, in some cases insulation coming out, and the bright yellow rafters up above with names on them from when in the nineties, they let us climb a rope and sign our names up on top of those rafters. So, if you look closely, you could find a J left up there. So, window replacements at the middle school, some HVAC improvements. We're exploring the possibility of a covered walkway between the buildings, but really we're looking to find more effective use of the current space at our middle school. As I mentioned before, it's important that our learning spaces mirror what our workspaces look like. So, there's money dedicated to create new spaces at the elementary school, as well as the middle school. At the elementary school, we would look to create new flexible learning classrooms, which include the creation of a STEM room, so a room dedicated towards science, where teachers can sign out and bring their students for experiments. There would be upgrades to the auditorium, as well as small group instructional space and additional classrooms at the middle school. And specifically at the elementary school, a real focus on bringing the outdoors in. So, this was my favorite slide to show at the elementary school back to school nights. So, this is a picture of the graduating class of nineteen forty-eight, which is inconsequential other than the fact that they're standing on the stage of the elementary school, which looks identical to today. And then I asked the audience members to look at the seats they're sitting in, which are also identical to this picture. And our original folding chairs from nineteen thirty-five, so no one could question the craftsmanship of that day. The last piece of the project is the Health and Wellness Center. This is a space for both physical education and health classes. It's a space for inter-scholastic sports, for a practice space. Specifically, we're looking to address needs of our cheerleading and wrestling teams. They're currently relegated to practicing in hallways and in cafeterias and in space that is certainly not conducive to their sports. So, this would be a space, a dedicated space for them to use practices, as well as other teams, both in-season and out. And I really like to think of it as an academic classroom. As a former physics teacher, I would be in this space every day. We are asking teachers to become more and more active, asking teachers to allow their students to be more and more active learners. And I see teachers in the hallways, in their classrooms, moving desks aside to do experiments and to really get students up and moving. And this would really be a space that would be conducive to that type of learning. It would be a space that would also be available for community access to support our youth sports programs. I myself chauffeur my two young boys all over Westchester and Putnam County to indoor turf facilities, and this would certainly be a space conducive for their needs. And that's a rendering of what the inside of the building may look like. As I mentioned, it would be an astroturf floor. We could partition it off with nets. You see on the right-hand side, there's room for a little running track around the outside, and we could partition it in half to allow both cheerleading and wrestling to happen at the same time. It would also meet some of our storage needs, where we have mats hidden under stairwells and in cafeterias. We would have a dedicated space for those mats. So, just some important dates. In August, we commissioned the State Education Department to conduct an environmental study. We've got the results back from that study and approved them at a board meeting in September, where there was no environmental impact found for the project. There'll be continued board discussions throughout the fall. The last date of register to vote is November twenty-ninth. Our anticipated vote date is December fourth. We anticipate construction beginning sometime in the spring of two thousand twenty, with an anticipated completion date of the fall of two thousand twenty-one. So, the last piece is really just inviting the community to get involved. We recently commissioned a project implementation committee. We met in September and discussed ways to make sure that we get accurate information to all constituents across the community. So, if anyone wants to get involved, who's watching this online, can contact Jeanne Denike or if they have any questions, they're more than welcome to contact me and I'll be happy to take them through any of the specifics, or I'll pass them off to my colleague Jill, who could take them through the financial pieces.
Where is that, where is, is that an additional building? Where does the footprint of the Wellness Center, that we're calling it, where is that?
So, here's a rendering of where it'll be located. It'll be located adjacent to the existing high school gymnasium on the top of the hill there. This location was picked for many reasons. One, it's physically connected to the athletic wing of the high school, which offers us access to locker rooms and bathroom facilities without having to build those into the structure. It's at a space that doesn't require a lot of excavation or retaining walls. That space is pretty flat. It doesn't infringe upon the geothermal wells, which are a little bit further out in that same field, and it offers proximity to both the high school and the middle school for its use. It'll be brick-faced, so it blends in with the rest of the structure. We anticipated having a green roof to, again, blend in, so it doesn't look like some building was dropped on the property overnight, but instead was built around the same time and everything else. So, it would really be, the architecture of the building would be designed to blend in with the rest of the high school.
Where is entry access to this?
It's connected directly from this athletic wing right here. That's an enclosed entryway, but there is exterior, obviously exterior exit doors. But it's connected right here between the two buildings.
David, that's a very large roof for solar panels.
It was part of it. We have had discussions and asked architects to look into the possibility of retrofitting it with solar panels to help offset electrical usage.
How large is the Wellness Center going to be and is it going to be large enough to host games or sports?
All right. So, unfortunately, it's not large enough to be held for competitions. It would really be exciting if it would, but when you take, if you look at the size of the building and how it fits within that space, that's actually about the third of a size of a soccer field. So, the building would ultimately be about three times larger, which would take it all the way, almost to the track of the, right across the baseball field. So, it's not a space that's conducive for competitions, although we could certainly hold competitions of gymnastics, I mean, of cheerleading or wrestling in there. But we would certainly, because of the stands and other things like that, we would allow those competitions to take place in the gym as well. But it's a space for practice for all sports, as well as a classroom space during the day and a space for community use.
But it's large enough for the youth-sized soccer?
Certainly in terms of, of a practice space, what they would use, yeah. It's about seventeen thousand square feet. It's about a third of a soccer field, or if you put three basketball courts side-by-side, that's sort of the dimensions of the inside of the structure. If you look at it in comparison to the gym right next to it, you could tell, just give it a scope of the size, it's a pretty large play area.
Okay, so, I've been going in my head, trying to, I've listened, been on the committee since the beginning. I've sat at board meetings for twenty-five years, listening to the development of education in Putnam Valley, and trying to resolve this project as a unit that improves the academic and social, emotional lives of our students, staff, and community. You know, I've heard a lot of talk about, could we only do part? Can we leave out some? Can we, can we eliminate some, make it cheaper, save money, whatever? And you and I, Jeremy, you and I have talked and Fran and Jill, but I want you to talk to me about why we can't, if we take any parts off of this, it is not looking forward for students in Putnam Valley.
All right. I think what the committee's goal was, and it's something that we deal with on a daily basis in education now, is really finding a way to support the whole child. And by that, I mean, we can't simply support students with rigorous curriculum in their classroom and then expect them to be successful, because that's not really the world they're entering, that it goes well beyond that in terms of social, emotional, and physical health. And really, across all three of those, we've been seeing declines and, and students struggling with all three. And we really believe that this space is not a want, that it's a need, and it's a space that'll be used to support the whole child in terms of having, being an academic space, a social, emotional space, as well as a physical space, for a space for physical exercise and for students to improve and be, and be better.
I wonder if we could ask, I asked Brian to come. Maybe Brian could help us a little bit with some of his background, which is the physical and the health, that part of the project and the vision behind it.
Good evening, everyone. So, when we initially were looking at this capital project and what could be done and what the needs were for the district, one of, one of the goals was to make sure that every dollar that we spend was the most, the best utilization of that money. And when we started to look at what are our facility needs and where are we squeezed to the point where we're not able to offer students and community members certain access points and, and they're begging for space and places and we can't facilitate that because we're already over utilizing what we have, being hallways and cafeteria space and mats are everywhere. So, one of the things that we looked at was, if we're going to create a facility that is going to alleviate some of this pressure and overflow, what would we be able to utilize not only year-round, calendar-wise, for off-season training and things of that nature, but what could we use across the day? So, what this structure is going to allow us to do is to use it all day for academics, recess purposes. I, I love the fact that he brought up physics today. I was talking about that earlier today in the PEAC. They'll utilize the hallways for various projects down by the gymnasium and it's just very apparent that we need additional space. We also, it's important to include the fact that back in the day when the school was built, we didn't have a lot of the programs that we have today. So, we didn't have cheerleading and wrestling and all of these programs that require all the mats and so on and so forth. So, one of the things that you can't see from this angle, but within that space from the current exit of the athletic hallway into the Health and Wellness Center is a storage area. And that's very important to not overlook. That is a need. That's something that we have to have. The mats are everywhere. And I think with the current lunch situation where we have recess and things going on, you see all of a sudden, it's very apparent, the need for these kids to get out some energy. So, not only the middle school will be able to use this for phys ed and potentially recess and things of that nature, but the high school kids as well. And the phys ed departments can communicate with each other and both utilize this space so that we're not overlapping and things of that. I think what you're going to find is that if this is successful and this is created, that space is going to be instantly full with so many wonderful, different events. The off-season trainings, being able to pull the batting cage out of the current gymnasium, put a couple of them in this space so that teams and community can use that ahead of the season where we're bound by the weather and the snow. We can't put up a batting cage in there until basketball is complete. Basketball has been going very far. It's been very successful. So, the softball, baseball teams are just sitting there chomping at the bit. When can we get in? When can we get in? We can't. And now, once we put up the batting cage currently, there's no more ability to run a full court in that gymnasium because of the structure of the netting and the wires and things. So, you're, you're going to instantly expand all the possibilities that people are already looking to do at this point, but we just can't do it.
So, one thing that I've noticed in the unit lunch, when I go to visit, where the students are everywhere in the facility, the gym is very popular and you see high school students. We always think, well, recess, it's for little kids. Well, everything we know about health, mental health, has to do with being, with getting up and moving. So, our students who are in school, you know, taking their lessons, then they have the unit lunch, that's where a lot of them are there. And we find that they are actually experiencing that movement, and that's been something that really made me aware of the fact that we haven't really provided significant opportunities for our kids to move during the day and to have outlets during the, you know, the week, different times, different times of the day and on the weekends. We don't have that many places for our students to go during the weekends. A lot of students, as you know, we know the problem with the cell phones and attached to them, and we also read regularly the research that says, if we move, that affects our mind, our mental health and our emotions. Our school district is studying the Ruler Program, which is one that helps people look within and look at their moods and look at their emotions. We're making an impact now, we can see, on disciplinary matters at this high school because we have these, this new approach. This is another way to affect our students in a very positive way. Students who might be at home with their phones, but it's not even just the movement. There's a social aspect to coming out to a facility like this, where there's a walking track, where there's places to do, you know, some impromptu soccer or different things. So, and then meet each other and talk to one another. We don't have places for that and really feel that school is much more, you know, than the classroom. And our classrooms are no longer the rows, okay? We're doing different things. You mentioned the physics class, but the maker space classes, the, the engineering classes in both the middle school and the high school, all of that can find a place in this space. It, it isn't a, it isn't an extra. It's really something that we need and more and more we realize that we need.
I mean, I have to say, with all that we've learned over the years about student disciplines, students with disabilities and just your kind of typical students, there's a great book called Spark that actually is, explains all of the studies that are out there that really show the direct correlation between movement and exercise and increase in test scores and increase in, you know, really just attention focusing. And then they also show a decrease in discipline. I will say, at the middle school, where we often see discipline sort of rise from the elementary level, we have tried to create sensory rooms and we've tried to, but there's just, there really is no space anymore. We're just out of space and, and trying to implement things like that in the hallway where, you know, having students, you know, doing some, you know, exercises or movement is just, it's, it's tough. It really is a need at this point. It's not, it's not a want. It's, it really is a need, that, that space and those, the outlets. So, just speaking from, from my perspective, I agree, Dr. Wells.
Thank you.
So, I know we are going to hear from Jill in terms of the money piece, that part of this, but I do feel that as, as my charge of representing the taxpayer as well as the student, because I agree with every single word that has been said thus far, I feel I need to ask the question, ten years ago, we had two hundred less students at each building than we do now, but we now need more space. So, explain, I think you've explained a lot of it in terms of, we're not in rows. And I do want to say in the caveat tab, a little more than ten years ago, I worked in the school and beginning March first, the announcement at two o'clock came over the loudspeaker, "Will all staff remember to move your cars? The baseball team is practicing in the parking lot." So, I, I want to say that there have been some non-ideals when there were two hundred more students.
Why don't you know I was on a baseball team that practiced in that parking lot all the time?
You probably were. You probably made me move my car.
So, this is something that we've heard a lot, and if you look at the And if you look at the capacity of the middle school, you could put out numbers of how many people the middle school can fit, this isn't like we're trying to stay below fire department regulations, like we can put 30 kids in every class and fit lots and lots of kids in the building. So, but that's not the way that education works anymore. And it's not the academic program that anyone wants. So when I was there in the 90s, there was much less of an offering and there was much less to do and there was many more students in a classroom than what we have today. So I think the quick answer is, is as our instructional program becomes more and more diverse and there's more and more offerings for students, that many times that means smaller class sizes as we individualize instruction for all students. And as we individualize instruction for all students, each of those classes requires another space. So classrooms that once had 30 students may in some cases now have 20 or 15, but those 15 students may be getting a specialized support that didn't exist when I was there in the 90s. We see increases in the number, of our numbers of E and L students. And certainly those students need their own spaces. And, and they didn't require a space when, when I was there. I mean, they, they were probably, in many cases, were forgotten and just put into a classroom with everyone else. And that's certainly not what we know is best for them and for education. So our, we've changed our instructional program to accommodate the needs of students and those needs of students require space. And that's why we use every nook and cranny of that middle school, from closets to hallways, to meet our instructional program. And it's no secret, we have a world language class that takes place in the coral room. And it's not ideal. And parents let me know it when I saw them at the back to school night. And we're doing everything we can. In fact, we've, we've moved them into what used to be the SAP room, just to find them a space that's more accommodating to the academic program. But the academic program that we're offering our middle school, we believe is robust, it's rigorous, and we believe it's good for students. We've gone to core academic blocks, just similar to what we did at the high school, which again, further restricts our classrooms. But again, all the research tells us that those academic blocks are good for students and it's good for learning. And that's really what our first mission is. So we're doing whatever we can to make an instructional program that benefits students, regardless of our space constraints.
I know the, the one, what you, and I'm still struggling with, I'm always struggling when we ask our community to spend money. That's why Jill's presentation is gonna be so important. But, you know, we've all talked about the increase in school avoidance, school anxiety. And I do know, I do remember from firsthand how difficult it was if your last name started with B, but all your best friend's last name started with N through R, you were not at lunch in the middle school with your friends. And in today, in today's standard, that could mean the difference between attending school or not.
That's right.
Although, that's ridiculous, go to school, go to school. We have seen so much more of school avoidance, school anxiety, school stress, being able to eat, even though that comes with its own set of issues. Putting 211-year-olds with knives, forks, and food in one room together has its own issue. I think that that is, that, that's my favorite part of the project.
Well, and I've sat at enough meetings when middle school social studies classes all had 30 students. And they were sitting on the radiators. And not only were there not enough room for the desks and chairs for them, but there was no way a teacher could assign a meaningful writing assignment because there wasn't any way that they could grade them and get them back if you have 150 students. So the learning that they were doing, yes, they were being accommodated and yes, you know, they were learning, but it wasn't the kind of learning, optimal learning that we were hoping for in those larger group classes.
And of course, having said all that, we are still charged with being fiscally responsible to our taxpayer, which is why we're gonna have you move out of the way and let Jill come up to the podium.
How happy he is to move. Like that segue?
Yeah, I like that segue.
A little harsh.
I don't know if Jill does.
A little harsh.
But yeah, he does.
I said he moved out of the way, not get out of the way.
Really not gonna run you over with a lot of numbers. There aren't a lot of numbers to, to give you, other than the numbers that we went over in the previous presentation. I, the, the main, the main idea of the project is to know that the timing is right. So, you know, the timing is right because we have $900,000 coming off of the debt service in 2021, '22. And as I mentioned last, the last board meeting, you know, that's the opportunity that we need to take advantage of because I don't know if that opportunity to make these changes will be able, you know, will be facilitated in a, in a, in a budget because we just simply won't be able to do it. So I really wanna stress the fact that, that it's the right time. It's, it's an opportunity for us to, again, reinvest our existing debt into the new project. And again, the project won't result in any increase in taxes. Another point to mention is that the project cannot be, it can't be exceeded. I, I've been asked that question. So the budget can't be exceeded, once it's adopted in the resolution, which we're gonna ask for this evening. So the cost cannot exceed the amount that's approved. And there's a budget, there's escalation costs figured in, and the scope of the project is developed, but it's not finalized. So that scope can change along the way, depending upon drawings. We have to submit them to New York State Education Department. And under no circumstances can the project exceed the, the bond amount.
So the scope of it might change, could change, but the cost cannot, once we approve the amount?
Right, and there wouldn't be dramatic change, but there may be changes that have to be made because we have walls here or windows here, or, I'm talking about those types of changes. Again, the project will help stabilize the annual tax levy. So this is the, the money piece that people need to understand. The debt service drops, right? So, so does our tax levy limit. When we have that tax levy limit calculation, we use the debt service as part of the calculation. Once that drops off of the calculation, we have a lower number that will, will allow us to tax less, but then we could never add that back into the tax levy for the needs that we may have, like an infrastructure or for the windows, for the heating systems, for the bathroom facilities, the things that are a definite need. And again, there's the need for the students, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about infrastructure, okay? I'm not talking about those other things. But those things are not gonna be affordable in a regular operating budget without taking out a program, without taking out, off of staffing needs. And again, in order to do that, we could be seeking a supermajority vote in the future, not somewhere we wanna go if we don't have to. Why, if the opportunity is there to keep the tax levy at a level, you know, stabilized amount, why would we want to do that? So the state aid will reduce the cost to the taxpayer. The state aid that we get on the project, we're talking about a $14.8 million project. We have aid coming in, Jeremy mentioned, Dr. Luft mentioned, the $6.3 million total. That was the first few presentations that he gave. That included aid, and it's only an estimate, on the principal and the interest. And then there was a $4.9 million number mentioned, which only, we felt at that point, we also needed to say that we really don't know what the interest rates are gonna be. So the $4.9 million number is on the principal and only the principal costs. And the 6.3 is more of a projection of what it might be on the principal and the interest. So the difference between these two estimates and the amount, like I said, is just the interest. And to be completely transparent, wanted to give it in both, you know, perspectives so people understood the, the fiscal part of that. So this last point I'm gonna make, the project protects programs and saves money. This is everything that you've been talking about before I got up here. If we don't address the infrastructure needs, it, it could impact our budgets down the road because simply that we'd have to take the money out of the budget to, or plan for those items in the budget instead of planning for programs and staffing needs. So what happens to our ability to maintain facilities in 21, '22 if we don't maintain the same level of debt? So the debt service is lower and the tax levy is lower, and that makes everybody happy. But the building aid is lower and then we lose stability and we lose our opportunity to maintain the tax levy. And it creates a need to budget money for infrastructure projects from the general fund and it causes loss of money in the budget for programs and staff. So basically, that's the whole thing in a nutshell. So when you say that there's a big fiscal piece to it, I mean, that's what we need, really need to understand. That's, that's the beginning to the end. And the numbers are just numbers. I mean, the $900,000 that's falling off is no higher if we do the project. So there's no increase in the taxes because we're staying within that, that structure of the budget and keeping the debt level steady. So how do we pay for, this is what we need to think about, is how we're gonna pay for those needed renovations and repairs if we don't do it by way of the capital project. Right? We'll have a revenue shortage from lower taxes because of inconsistency in the tax levy. And we have to think about what happens if the amount of taxes fluctuate from year to year going forward after that. And I, if you wanna go over, you know, if the numbers more, we can do that. If you have questions, we can also talk about.
Yeah, and does anybody have any questions?
Well, I mean, I, are there numbers to follow this?
No.
Okay, so even, in my mind, even if we were to decide not to do any of the improvements at all, regardless of if we, how we would fund them later down the road through the irregular budget, even if we, if I understand this correctly, even if we decided to not do anything as part of this project, the debt, the, the debt goes off of the rolls, the tax levy will have to reduce to stay within the cap by about $900,000, which then means that's $900,000 less we have to spend on anything.
Well, sort of, yes, because...
So that automatically impacts our teaching and the programs that we can offer. Because even if we didn't spend that money, we're on that, we're on that, I should say on the edge, but we're on, in that position where that levy needs to come way down. And I, I, I just, even if we weren't to try and fund these projects at a regular budget times, we'd be on the edge of kind of making sure that we don't have to cut educational programs.
Right, well, at some point, you would impact the budget by some of these items that were included in the, in the, in the project. And it's exactly why I didn't wanna put the numbers up, because I don't want people getting caught up in the idea of, of the numbers themselves. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna change, interest is gonna be what it is and, and, and debt is gonna, you know, it's gonna be affected by the aid and all of that and whatever that level is. But the understanding has to be that the only way to do these types of, of projects is to make them capital projects, create the debt that we need to create so that the tax levy can stay stable. Because you won't be able to afford to do those changes, those, those things within the budget and keep the same staffing, same programs, same everything we have, and do all of those things at the same time. So it will impact the, the programs in that way.
When you say all those things, new windows, we need new windows, infrastructure...
Right, I mean, you know...
Improvements.
Right. These are things that you wanna do as a project and get the most aid out of it. You don't wanna have to replace three or four windows or an air handler, like, because that's all we could afford to do this year. You know, these are things that you need to keep up your facilities and you should be doing them on a regular basis. We can't afford to incorporate those regularly into our budget. We should do it at a time when we know that that is going to keep our tax levy stable and it's not going to impact the, the tax base that we already have.
Just, just to clarify, the, the tax levy can be negative, correct? I mean, our tax, when they do the formula, it can be less than zero. Yes, no?
It can't be less than zero. It can be, it can go down. You're saying the...
Well, that's, well, the spending increase. When you do the formula, this year you can raise it 0.6, next year 1.10, it's not 2%.
Right, it could cause us to go in the other direction, correct?
But it could go less than...
Than what it is now.
Correct. Which to me is a negative.
It could.
Which means that in planning budgets, because there are contractual and just general expenses, fuel costs and whatever, there would have to be cuts and reductions for everybody.
Right.
To me.
I mean, if you look at our ability to levy taxes based upon what the, the cap we get from the state and what our fixed costs are, there's not a lot of wiggle room between those two numbers, right? There's not enough money between our fixed costs or contractual obligations and our tax levy limit to fund these programs without there being some sort of impact, some give and take from what's already in our operating budget. And I think that's an important piece. If we're forced to fund these direct, without state aid, out of our general fund, that there's just simply not enough money that's not already accounted for in that operating budget to cover these costs without coming into expenses or something else.
And why would we leave the state aid on the table? We're getting 59.12% of state aid on capital projects, which we won't be able to call a capital project unless we make it one. And I think that it's a lost opportunity if, if that road isn't taken.
And the...
I can go over the numbers of the total project?
No, no.
I mean, I think it's three numbers. You know, it's a $14 million project. There's about $6 million in aid coming as a result of it. And $900,000 is the difference in what we would experience in the budget that first year. And that's the amount of money that could impact your losses in your budget. So I think that's a big number.
So in the, so without, so when we say lower the tax levy, what there are people that might be hearing that means lower my taxes as a taxpayer. But that may be for the short term. If we're then needing to put a bond up because we need to replace a roof or do some of these infrastructure issues...
Right, so on average...
We'll be asking for this money again at another time.
That's correct. So on average, what we figured out was that the impact of a $900,000 reduction in debt means about $250 to a homeowner, an average homeowner, average home valued at like $350,000, which is the average home in Putnam Valley.
I just think it's important to note that the timeliness of this work is to allow this all to happen without there being an increase in taxes. And if that window passes and some of that $900,000 goes back, back onto the tax rolls and then we decide a year or two later, it'll be impossible for us to do the same amount of work with, and still being able to say, this will not increase taxes. And when you look around the, the three counties of projects that have been successful and those that have not, there has not been a high success rate in any project that has the word increase in taxes. And one neighboring district just got voted down with an increase of taxes in like a dollar and 66 cents, but they were not able to say no increase. And when you look at the ones in the area that... And when you look at the ones in the area that have passed, they've all been able to successfully reinvest their debt and say, we can accomplish all of this without an increase in taxes. And I think that's really the model we're trying to follow, is we can improve our schools, we can raise home values, and it will not make your tax bill any higher.
And I think all of the aspects of the project have been very thoughtful. So, all of the things that have been incorporated in the plan and what's being, and what we're hoping to submit as a result of the, the bond referendum are going to impact all of the different constituent groups in the school district and where it is needed most in the middle school. Um, and I, and I really believe in that, and I believe in holding on to, um, the debt service for the good of the district and not having to have those taxes fluctuate from year to year and have that unknown and when that can be replaced.
So, the, the, also with the math, the nine hundred thousand dollars, um, which is what this project's size is built upon, about, you know, maintaining that debt service level so that, um, we're not increasing the levy. That just means for that part of the budget, this is not saying, I just want the taxpayers to understand as well, this is not saying, right, get this correctly, year to year, the board has the ability to reduce the levy for the rest of, you know, the, the global levy for the entire current school year budget by the budget we adopt. This is just talking about maintaining the current debt service level dollar amount that we currently have. It's not talking about, we're locking in the same exact, all the way across for the fifteen years' life because we have the operational part of the budget that we have, uh, all that control over in what we're doing. So we're not saying that taxes will never go up or never go down. We're saying that there is, for this portion, which does not, um, increase your taxes from our current level.
So relative to the project, there will not be any increase or decrease.
No, in fact, in fact, when we do close on, when we have a closing on a, a bond, um, the debt level is kept, you know, at an even rate so that it's not, doesn't fluctuate throughout the life of the loan. It's a fifteen-year loan and that's, you know, again, also with the aid, it's, it doesn't fluctuate. We're, it's a known schedule from the day we close until those fifteen years are over. There's not a new number every year, it's, it's that number. And, and we've made that, we've already done the homework on that and knowing how, how much that is from year to year, so. You know, and, and it stays the same.
Without looking like I'm clutching at straws, I did have another thought Natalie, in terms of special education. Opening up spaces could, I know that there have been decisions made about sending students out of district because we don't have adequate facilities in district. Um, and an out-of-district placement can be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a student.
Absolutely, and also, when we create programs, we can bring students here. We do have some current students, but it would also afford us the opportunity to create new programs to even attract, uh, you know, tuitioning and students into our district, for sure.
What, can, what, can I, um, Davis, there's, Mr. Facility, I'm so used to you being over there. This is changing my whole perspective. Um, any addition to what you've seen in terms of the infrastructure needs or?
Yeah, this, uh, go to the mic.
Do you have to go talk at the microphone, 'cause Dan's pointing to you?
Yeah, uh, this project has been thoroughly vetted and, uh, I, since I, I got on, um, you know, took a hard look at the five-year plan that KGND did for us in, in twenty-fifteen. I, I took off all of the projects that were accomplished from that, um, via the EPC. And then I'm looking at, um, the windows and other things that absolutely need to be done from an infrastructure standpoint and vetted the project against those needs that I see coming in the next five years. And that was another difficult day when we had to say, wait a minute, we can't do this without taking care of the windows at the middle school because we didn't want this project to finish, um, in four years and then say, oh, there's another million-dollar bill coming at us, or two million. Um, and so we needed to incorp, we, we vetted that against the five-year plan and what I see as, as the needs, uh, for the district to make sure, um, a lot of them are taken care of. Not all of them, we're gonna have more ongoing, but, but a lot of them, it really incorporates a lot of those.
Jill, what's the process now? Today we have a resolution, what does our resolution say?
Right, so the, the resolution gives us, um, forty-five days to have the actual vote, which I believe is, uh, would be slated for December fourth. Um, in between now and then, um, just people getting registered to vote, if they, if they're not registered, and, um, usual process before a, a regular vote. But, um, the SECRE resolution was done, which was the environmental impact, all of that was done. Um, it's, it's more or less, um, getting, um, public information out to everyone and making sure that they understand why the project is so important, um, what the needs are versus what, you know, and, and go over the questions that they have. We're gonna also have, um, a question and answer period, I believe, before, uh, one of the board meetings coming up. I'm not sure of the date on that one.
I believe it's November fifteenth.
Okay, so, um, and again, tonight, specifically, I mean, I didn't want to just run through a whole bunch of numbers and I know that the accountant, uh, the accounting firm was here earlier. He also showed the debt dropping off in his presentation and all of that. I, I liked and I rather have the questions because I know what, or I think what people are thinking is what I wanna answer, you know what I mean? I wanna answer the questions that I think people are thinking about, rather than present them just, I can do that. I can do that next time, I can, I can, uh, you know, go up there with a, a, an, an math problem that everyone, um, you know, could try and understand, or some people could try and understand. But I think the questions that come in are important and easier for me to find out what you're thinking rather than try to tell you what I think you're thinking, if that makes sense.
And, and I think I would ask at our last board meeting, that the reason for a December vote and not waiting until our May regular budget vote is that allows us the eighteen months that it often takes to get permits and state approval and all of that so that we can do summer construction.
Right, so after, after the vote takes place, if, um, the vote is successful, it will go to the New York State Education Department for their vetting purposes. They'll go through every architectural drawing and, you know, decide whether or not the plans are, um, acceptable and feasible and how much aid we're gonna get. And we will be speaking with them regarding the Health and Wellness Center and how that is an academic part of this plan and not just, um, a, a building that no academics is gonna take place in. Because, you know, that's, those aid figures that we put up there, they don't include aid on that building. But we understand that that's not impossible to get aid on that building and we are gonna make, um, that attempt and very strong case to them as to how we think that's, that's the case. And, and, and it's not unheard of, in other districts, they do, um, get aid on their, on their spaces that they have athletic and, uh, physical education in. And we certainly just need to make that case known and perhaps we will get some sort of aid on that part of the project as well.
Which would increase the aid numbers.
It would increase what we've been talking about, we didn't include any of that.
No, 'cause you wanted to go conservative.
Okay, so, it, if, these are needs that we have, and this goes to Jeremy Fran. We see these as district needs. These are not a wish list, this is not a, if I had all the money in the world or my little pet projects. These are things we see as educational leaders, mostly you and Jeremy and the principals. If the community doesn't see it that way, like, then, then where do we go? We still believe that this is essential for learning. And I, you know, I'm concerned about that, maybe we shouldn't, maybe we don't wanna talk about it now. But I, I wanna think about the what-ifs, because to me, if we don't do this, it leaves a real gap in what we can do for students.
I mean, I think the short answer is that we'll continue doing all the things we're already doing and we'll continue to look at ways to innovate and be creative within our scheduling and our instructional programs so that students are not losing out. We'll continue to offer all of the programs we offer, but we'll also continue to eat in shifts and have music lessons in the hallways and, um, not have a library and wheel our food from next door. Like, there is, those things, unfortunately, we can't just pay for those improvements out of our general fund. But the real challenge will be to maintain all of our programs, to keep doing all the amazing things that we're doing in our buildings on a daily basis and still address the infrastructure needs. Because regardless of whether the bond passes or not, the windows need to be replaced. Regardless of whether the bond passes or not, we need to do work on our HVAC systems. And those needs will always be there. The problem becomes is now those needs are competing with the same pot of money as our staffing and instructional programs. And that's where the real dilemma's gonna be, because we'll keep doing what we've been doing, but it's gonna get harder and harder to do those things with less and less money if we're forced to subsidize those projects out of our general fund.
Will this be, this topic be on the agenda for the next forty-five days, more or less? Will, like we do for the budget, it'll be a quick review or?
Sure, we can talk about it anytime, um, we just.
Opportunity for the public.
We have to, uh, if we want to hold the vote on December fourth, um, the resolution has to be, uh, passed this evening.
Mm-huh.
Um, because we do need the forty-five-day window, uh, to meet the New York State guideline. And, um, absolutely. We talked about anytime, any day, uh, the contact information, I mean, if people wanna.
We've been speaking to people who have called. We've been responsive to, um, anyone who has questions, setting up appointments, meetings.
And we've had some really good questions and, and answer, um, you know, I have meetings set up with people that wanna come in and talk about it, um, and we're doing that, um, uh, you know, people that wanna find out what's going on.
Are we posting those questions and answers anywhere where other people that have questions could see them and then say, oh, that's, I was just asking that same question?
We plan to, we plan to put those on the website, um, so that people can, um, view them and get, you know, maybe some of the same questions answered.
And we'll get them out also in a connected link so that people know, um, that, that those are there. And, um, we'll have a newsletter, we will have, uh, a town, we'll be at the town hall so, so that we reach everybody, because our goal is to reach everyone.
Right, we wanna speak, not just to the parents.
Yeah, we are.
We've only got three board meetings before that vote, just so everybody knows.
And Jeremy has been at every back-to-school night, um, Dave has been at the back-to-school nights. Um, I've been out and about talking, we have the real estate, uh, real estate agents coming.
We're having a meeting with some realtors in the area.
Very soon, in the next week or so.
There's also been a brochure, um, out, uh, we've been presenting it at events so people get the message and, and can see what exactly it is, um, being, we're being, uh, transparent about all of that and what the plans are, what the cost is. Just welcome the questions and the answers so that everyone can become educated on the whole thing.
There'll be a video too, coming up, a video on the.
Oh, that's right.
Regardless of the outcome, when I look back upon these last few months, I never wanna hear that we didn't know about that. So, we're doing everything we can possibly think of to make sure that accurate information is sent out to the community. That includes the creation of a website where all the presentations will be posted, the, the facts that Jill shared tonight will be posted, we started an FAQ document which will be posted on there. We've done back-to-school nights, we've done town board meetings, it's like a roadshow, anybody who wants to hear it is welcome. We created posters, flyers, brochures, anything that we can possibly think of to make sure that accurate information is getting out to anybody who is looking for it or not.
I question, I, I wonder if, uh, there should be, just like we do a budget newsletter, there should be a mailed piece of this so that those people that aren't, you know, in, aren't in the circle and don't get our stuff until afterwards and say, I don't know about this.
We're planning that as well.
That we should get some sort of, as well as talking at, uh, a town hall meeting when you get closer.
And will our, our vote be a full-day vote?
It'll be a full-day vote from six AM to nine PM, um, and I believe it is going to be at the elementary school.
Uh, I just, uh, I apologize for coming in late, I was working. So, I got here a little late, so I hope I'm not being redundant, uh, with any information here. But I just wanted to put in my, uh, two cents about this. Um, and, and as I enter, I, I hear a lot of discussion that is about the money, which it always has to be, and I applaud that and I applaud the completeness of, uh, of what Mrs. Figarella has done and the discussion by, uh, Mr. Luft. I, I just want, wanna make sure that, that it's out there, that, you know, it's very important to me that our school system, uh, is an attractive part of our community. It's just as it's important for me that, that our town park, which I find is a beautiful addition to our community, it's, that's important to me because it makes our community more attractive. And it's very important to me that our school system is the same thing. Uh, just as it would be my home and, uh, my vehicle and the other major expenses that I have. So, I mean, this is where I'm coming from, um, uh, you know, I invest in all those things, like my home, like my car, like, like my family, things that need investments in. I may buy a new car, but I still have to change the oil and get new tires, et cetera. I have to redo parts of my home from time to time. And so this is just another thing that I feel I have to invest in, uh, in order to, to make my community more attractive. And I will admit that someday, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, I'm gonna have to put a for-sale sign out front of my house. And I want it to have an attractive school system, uh, that's going to help it, uh, be worth more because that's the question that comes up with every home buyer.
Yeah.
How are the schools?
Yep.
So, uh, it's, it's important to me that, that, you know, I invest in the, in this major part of, of, of my community. The, the money is very important, uh, I do have a certain amount, I have to say, a, a, a great deal of trust in what Mrs. Figarella has done. Why? I think she's been a leader in the past in bringing us budgets and sometimes that have actually reduced the tax levy, which is unheard of, by the way. Still remains unheard of in the air throughout the area, and she's done that in the past. And, and so I know she takes a close look at all these things, trying to en, enhance our financial situation at all times and doing things at one time rather than another because it's going to benefit us as a community. So I appreciate that and that brings a certain amount of trust that I can't ignore when I'm considering these things. So I, I just wanted to, to, to give that bit of input that although the money is a major bit of importance, there's a part of me that says, yes, but what's really important here for me also is, is that we have this centerpiece of our community that is really something that we are very proud of and we wanna keep it, uh, as something that's very proud of and not let it, uh, in some or in any way deteriorate. Um, and, and we, we make do, sometimes we make do and we'll continue to make do. But sometimes we shouldn't have to make do. And, and, and I, 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 I want a school system that doesn't have cheerleaders practicing in the hallway, doesn't have wrestlers who have to set up the cafeteria every time they wanna practice and they come out with championship teams. Well, why shouldn't they have a, a, a nice facility too? So, I don't know if that's similar to what other people have said, but that's what I believe in as far around this project.
To your point, I think people have to think about their investments, their homes are their largest. Their homes are their largest, for most people, it's their largest investment. And their children are their second investment. And I think, you know, their first or their second, I'm just saying. Like they invest in their children as much as they invest in their lives and their homes and their, like you said, their large expenses. So, I mean, those two things, if not for everyone, is their most important investment. And I feel that passing by this opportunity would be a mistake. I don't know if anyone else has anymore.
And if we do, we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
We'll have other opportunities to chit-chat.
As Dr. Wills is getting set up, just for the community, this will be motion seven tonight.
Before I begin going over district goals this evening, I would like to introduce our SRO, our new SRO in our school district, Dan Mury, who is Deputy Dan Mury. And he is already an integral member of our staff. Everybody is very delighted, yes, let's give him a round of applause. The district has been fortunate to have some wonderful safety personnel. In this case, Deputy Mury has already made himself well-known, has been very helpful and supportive. He is certainly learning about our students, learning about our way of life, our culture here at the school district. And we're all comforted to know that we have someone of his quality and caring here in our school district. So Deputy Mury will be here at our meetings, as Corinne used to be at our meetings, and we're very glad of that. So I hope things are going well for you, Deputy, going well, getting to know everyone. And we're very happy to have you.
And I just, I love the presence. I happened to be in North Carolina a couple of weeks ago and I was in McDonald's when they were having, come to McDonald's with the local police department. And they were having a local school came to McDonald's just to casually, you know, interact. And I think it's important that our young people develop positive connections with law enforcement in our own schools, so thank you very much.
And I think actually, yesterday, was it yesterday? There was breakfast, there was an event that was for the Putnam County Sheriff's Office where there was a coffee with, coffee with a cup.
All right, very nice.
Unfortunately, it's during school hours.
So I would like to begin to talk about our goals for this year. And, you know, we started with a mission for the year. We have child first and foremost as our district mission. But for the year, we have a goal statement that was really a collaborative development, a collaborative endeavor among the administrators. The board met to talk about goals, we had the teachers, we had the Citizens Advisory Committee. And what we did is we adopted some of the ideas of Thomas Murray, who is, has written a book about schools of the future. And the centerpiece of the book, the central idea is transforming the student experience. And that's basically what we've been talking about this evening when we talk about the Health and Wellness Center and thinking about it differently than we have in the past, thinking about classrooms differently. Transforming the student experience means giving students a greater voice, a greater sense of agency in their environment so that they are effective at navigating the world that they're going to be a part of in their future. So the question we ask is how do we create a welcoming learning environment where relationships are nurtured, accomplishments are celebrated, and all are empowered to learn and grow? All meaning students and staff and our community. So one thing that, right now, in this cafeteria, we don't see color, but the district goals under, the district activities or objectives should be in red. And they're not on this screen, but from what I've heard from Dan, the public will see them in red. So there are basically two forms of this document. This form is the district form. And then I will show you the other form that you will be able to see, which is the form where each of the schools has their objectives to meet these goals. And so if you are a community member with students in the elementary school, you'll be able to see what the elementary school is doing in this area. Or the high school, the middle school, athletics and so on, special education, all of that. And that's in the next document, which is similar to this except, as I'll show you, has all of these other school activities and objectives. So Goal One is to create a culture that encourages and supports student agency within a safe and supportive environment. And that's the culture, the piece, the culture piece. And from the district's perspective, implementing innovative designs for education training and classrooms. And again, the innovation, we're talking about that Health and Wellness Center, for example. Establish innovative classroom academy, which Dr. Luft has established and has a group of teachers who are working on active and engaged learning and using different types of spaces, different types of furniture for their learning experiences. Students are independent learners, promoting opportunities for student participation on district-wide initiatives. So, for example, right now, at our high school, we have students involved in the unit lunch, which is an opportunity where we're going to have clubs meeting, where we already have teachers meeting with students, where we have, we had in our new library, which is an example, by the way, the library at our high school is an example of a space where all kinds of activities can take place. So there was an open mic there last Friday, and over a hundred students were there. And students were able to, and this deals with the student voice piece, the agency piece, students were able to provide their speeches or their poems, their stories. They were able to talk, to have their voices heard. We are now planning a one-act play contest or competition where students will be writing plays, there'll be some type of monetary award, and there will be a performance in our library because our library here at the high school can now be a performance space. And we want to demonstrate that with the one-act plays that the students are going to be creating. So those kinds of activities give you an idea about what we mean about student voice and agency. We had, we've already had our play rehearsals. We have opportunities for some new ways of teaching that our students are involved in. The next part of that goal for the culture is to institute effective communication strategies across constituent groups. So what we're talking about is having a variety of communication opportunities with the community, with staff, and with students. So in particular, with this facilities project, we are employing more media postings, more information. We're arranging parent engagement evenings, we're continuing our listening hours and doing other kinds of parent engagement evenings, providing a variety of avenues to communicate with staff, community, and students. This is what we're looking at this year. And particularly now, looking at our facilities project, we know that this is something we're focusing on, but it's for many other areas of information as well. Making sure our community understands what our school goals are, what we're about as a community. And this is true with our PTA, this is true with our Education Foundation that had this color run last weekend, where we had a massive turnout and a lot of excitement and enjoyment. The same thing has been true with our PTA events. These are opportunities for our community to understand. All of our administrators were there at that color run. So the community sees the kind of engagement, the kind of activities that go on. Identify opportunities for collaborative culture building, internal collaboration, and external collaboration. So for the district, we coordinate teacher-facilitated workshops. Right now, we have our teachers, Chrissy Phillips and Iarizzo, Christina Iarizzo, from the elementary school, running a workshop in Writing Revolution. They studied, they went to the, to Bosse's to study this new approach to writing. They had over thirty teachers taking their course, turnkeying their experience and very excited about what they can bring to their classrooms. And that's an ongoing course, so teacher-facilitated workshop. Christina Casey is here, she's been very active in her work with the de-escalation process and working with staff to, again, get them involved in this approach to. It started as a restraint process that we have to learn, that teachers have, but it's becoming more of a way of dealing with students who are intensely, intensely concerned with emotions and helping to de-escalate.
And we are bringing back the weekend workshops for teachers on first aid mental health training.
Yes, the first aid mental health training, which we had before, we had over fifty or more teachers involved. They're involved again. So that's an example, I'm just giving you some examples of what we mean. We also developed community partnerships. We've been actively involved with the library in Putnam Valley. And the library, again, we shared with them the furniture from our library, and they're very excited about using that. And we also have various activities, reading events with our library. Establishing and integrating, establish and integrate protocols and procedures that support the focus on student safety. Well, we have our SRO, of course, involved in that. And we have a collaboration with Altaris. We are integrating our social-emotional learning process with the concept of physical and emotional safety through the Social Emotional Learning Strategic Plan that Natalie Doherty will be leading, our Assistant Superintendent, and a Councilor Advisory Committee. So there's all of that work, ensuring that our transportation program provides a safe, efficient, and secure experience for students and their parents. We're meeting Wake Weekly now with the head of the transportation company that we contract with. He's coming here every week. And he meets with us to talk about how things have gone this week and what we need to do to improve. And we're working on our videos to make sure that the video cameras are working. We're looking at many other areas of how that bus company is operating and its regular monitoring every week. Goal Two, redesigning and, sorry. And personalizing the learning experience. It's interesting that we're using this as a goal and the Westchester School Boards is having a special dinner with John Merrow, who was using this. This is, he's a very famous researcher and reporter in the area of education on this very topic. And we've been doing work on this personalizing of the learning experience. So empowering students within the learning process, that's what we talk about, student agency. So we have, on our Board of Education, we have a student, one of our finest students with us. And this is a way we promote student agency. Sarah has an opportunity, Sarah Broas, to hear what's going on outside of the school to make the schools work and to understand what we're about. Student interests and passions, executive functioning skills, creating meaningful learning experiences and finding ways to celebrate accomplishments. At the district level, what does that mean? Supporting training and instructional strategies that provide student choice, building more opportunities for students to choose learning experiences that have long-term value and provide challenges such as the science research program, the Mandarin Chinese, where we have a second cohort now going through, providing training to teachers that encourage student employment of meaningful learning experiences and designing experiences that publicly celebrate student advancement. The second area there is identifying real-world applications for learning. So we have now the program that Dr. Luft has been working on with one of our teachers, Matt Danko, at the high school to do a real student skills class in some of the life-learning experiences hands-on in the classrooms. Sustainability program. I'm not going to belabor this too long, but I want you to understand what we're trying to do in terms of student engagement in real-life learning and having a student voice and agency. Providing support for the social-emotional learning, again, deepening our training and ruler, which is our social-emotional program. Goal Three, reviewing and assessing programs and strategies for effective impact on student learning. I'm not going to go through all the goals now because I know there's a lot here. But it's important that the public understands the complexity and the depth of what we're trying to do. Goal Four is to create spaces that are learner-centered and visually reflect our culture. And that, this is our whole facilities project here that our district is working on in terms of flexible learning spaces, Project Implementation Committee that's meeting, and so on. Goal Five, to develop professional learning models that are relevant, engaging, ongoing, and personally meaningful, teacher-driven experiences, as I've discussed. Goal Six is to evaluate a use of instructional technology as a tool that redefines instructional practice. So we now have a much more systematic assessment of technology use and really working at how we further student instructional engagement through technology. Goal Seven is to find ways to promote community collaboration. And so there are a variety of ways that we're engaging students in the schools and engaging our community through partnerships. For example, the school safety initiatives through our partnering with the Sheriff's Department, continuing to reinforce partnerships with the PB Library, COVID Care, and so on. Educational initiatives with nursery and preschools. This summer, there was a, our Assistant Superintendent ran a preschool program for some parents explaining what the school, you know, what preparations are needed to succeed in school. And Goal Eight, fostering appreciation for the fiscal and underpinnings of the educational program and promoting effective school-based fiscal planning. So part of that this year is the notion of the employee contract negotiations coming up this year. Also, and one of the goals here, we talk about, is succession planning for the new superintendent. So there are many district initiatives that are coming to the fore. I'd like to show you for one moment, show the public, the other document. I'm not going to go over it here, but I want to show it because I think it's important that the public knows that there's a way for them to see for each of these goals what the initiatives are in each of the schools. Because the school district cannot do anything alone, we can't do it from our district office. So there are goals for the district, for the high school, for example, for the culture that supports student agency, the new IB program, the science research, the unit lunch. For the middle school, the capstone class that's being developed, so students are learning about research. The elementary school, the challenge groups, special education, inclusive opportunities, athletics, ensuring opportunities for athletic participation. So for each one of the goals, you can see, as the public can see, and it's all highlighted in color, which they can see at home, that each one has a different color. For some reason, it doesn't work that way on this screen. But each one has a different color. So when they see this at home, when they go onto the website and look at the goals, which will be posted, they will be able to see what their schools are doing and what each of our organizational pieces, components doing in each of these goals.
As this becomes a public document, I just have, I mean, the substance is fine. And I think it's strong and touches all the points that we've talked about in multiple arenas. Just as far as structure, somebody should go through and use like a regular outline structure where it's not, you know, As and Bs, under larger As and Bs, where, you know, just to use that structure so as an official document of the district, it should just, I know it's picky, but it should look that way.
No, it's very important, I noticed that myself because a lot of input went into it.
And right, because it's a Google doc and everybody was getting into it, so I understand that. But when it becomes a final document, it's. that, but when it becomes a final document, it should be formal.
And we're teaching the kids how to research and how to present marketable, beautiful work, ours should be as well.
Yes.
So this would be considered a draft.
Exactly.
Dr. Wells, can I just ask you one question? And I love turnkey training, and I think it's a great idea. You mentioned professional development in terms of two elementary school teachers went and did writing, and then thirty teachers are taking them. Is there somewhere in the goal, or at what point, and I guess this may be a Dr. Luft question, if we're investing in increasing the salaries for those thirty people to attend a particular workshop in a particular method, do we then have an expectation that that method gets put into the teaching practices in the building?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so in this particular case, the training was several days in length, and it was after the school year, so there was no way for us to contractually send more people. So two teachers volunteered, volunteered to participate in the training with the expectation they would go back and work with the grade levels. Now, this training was specific to grades three and four, and we anticipate, I don't know if it's been scheduled yet, but we were told in the fall, a training would be offered for K two, for the teachers, for the same program, but through a primary lens to receive the same training, and then our implementation would then cover the entire middle school, I would say, or the entire elementary school, but the middle school as well, I know Ms. Mangieri was, I don't know if she attended, but I know she was looking into the program, and it's something that we hope will also span buildings and continue into the middle school. So it's common language, common practices for students that will span all grade levels.
So it's not one of our goals per se, but our staff development is connected with the programs and services and curriculum expectations we're putting in place? That was a very brief and concise goals presentation, Dr. Wells. I am very pleased with you. I was watching the eyes rolling over here, so I shortened it. Okay, why don't we jump right to our student representative report?
Okay, I only have a couple of items today.
You can be as long as you want.
This Tuesday was the high school's biannual blood drive, sponsored and organized by the National Honor Society. Every year, students sixteen and older have the opportunity to donate blood during their free periods. Each blood drive, we have between fifty and a hundred students that choose, that choose to donate blood, so each donation has the potential to save three lives. Thank you to all the students who participated, and thank you to the National Honor Society for organizing this event each year. Additionally, congratulations to Eamon Howley, Sarah Broas, and Lea Frankel. These three students were recognized as commended scholars by the National Merit Scholar Organization. They scored in the top fifty thousand students in the nation on the PSAT in their junior year, and were recognized for this great achievement. Congratulations to them on their hard work.
Can we clap since you're one of them?
Today, the history club took a trip to the Putnam County Veteran Memorial Park. From today until Sunday, the location is hosting a traveling replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall. The students actually helped to assemble the wall and prepare the location for visitors. So I actually had the opportunity to be a part of this trip, and it was really a fantastic community service trip that also honored the veterans who gave their lives in the Vietnam War. So if you have any opportunity to visit this weekend, I highly suggest visiting this unique monument while it's in Putnam County. So thank you to all members of the history club that were able to do that.
And it's through Sunday, including Sunday?
Through Sunday. With the new changes in the high school, the Common Lunch has brought about new opportunities. One such opportunity is to have open mics in the library on a monthly basis. All students are welcome to perform a talent, including an instrumental or vocal performance, or original poetry, or a short story reading. Thus far, the event has been a big hit with our students. But if you yourself are interested in attending an open mic, the Triumph Music Honor Society is sponsoring one at the Tompkins Corner Cultural Center on Friday, October 12th, at 7:00 PM, and attendance is free, so join us for some food and beverages and quality performances.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything from the PTA or PTSA? I was hoping that that was the case.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christina Casey, the corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. Our executive board is looking for a treasurer for the school year, please consider joining our board so we can help fund exciting trips and programs for our students. The Three For Me program is up and running. Three For Me encourages members to volunteer just three hours of their time over the course of the school year to support our elementary school teachers in tasks such as copying, organizing, and project planning. Coffee and snacks are provided to volunteers, and the program runs on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from nine AM till eleven AM. We had our first event of the school year on the first day of school, Tears and Cheers for kindergarten families. It was bittersweet to see the kindergartners on their first day of school, we wish them the best of luck. Throughout the month of October, we're running our family membership drive. The cost of membership is only ten dollars per family. You can sign up online on our website, or by completing a paper copy of our membership form. Your membership dollars help to support exciting events, learning experiences, and books for our students. While supplies last, our first families to sign up will receive a portable battery bank, and PTA members also get special discounts on PTA-sponsored events. The grade level in each building with the most family memberships will also win a prize. And we're also having another friendly staff versus staff membership competition between the elementary and middle school teachers. The building staff with the highest percentage of membership will win a luncheon. Our elementary, middle school picture date was this past Monday. Picture retakes will be on Friday, November ninth for both schools, and we're looking for volunteers to help out at this event. The PTA is hosting the Middle School Student of the Month breakfast tomorrow morning. Congratulations to all the recipients for the month of September. Our first general kickoff meeting will be on Wednesday, October 17th, at 7:00 PM in the elementary school auditorium. Join us as we kick off another amazing school year, come with your fresh ideas and enthusiasm. We also have a fourth grade committee meeting on Thursday, October 18th, at 6:30 at the elementary school library. We're looking for people to help plan the, the fourth grade, sorry, the fourth grade T-shirts, and the fourth grade moving up ceremony at the end of the year. On Friday, October 26th, we have our kindergarten pizza and pumpkin party from 6:30 to eight at the elementary school cafeteria. Cost is five dollars per PTA member families and ten dollars per non-PTA member families. It's also an additional ten dollars if you'd like to order a large pizza. Each child in your family can bring a pumpkin to decorate, we'll have materials set up to decorate them. Price includes beverage, snacks, and prizes, and feel free to bring a dessert to share. Don't forget to wear your costumes. We have some arts and ed events coming up. We already had Simon Says perform for the elementary school on September 13th. On Halloween, the fifth grade is going to purchase to see a Sugar Skull performance, and Arts and Ed is helping to fund the seventh grade trip to Stirbridge Village later this month, and Cherries of the Sun is returning this month for sixth grade. To volunteer for any of these events mentioned tonight, or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.pta, Putnam Valley PTA dot org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and like our Facebook page for more information. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. I skipped orders, I wasn't ignoring you, Dr. Wells. I went right past you and Dr. Luft, and went right to PTA.
No, I, I sort of brought most of my items into the, and Sarah. Covered the other ones.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Wells?
So it's hard to believe it's already October, it feels like only last week that we were shot out of a cannon at the beginning of school with lots of exciting changes, so I just want to commend all of my colleagues for making sure that all of those eventually went smoothly. And with the later start, and traffic, and the unit lunch, and panini gate, and the block scheduling at the middle school, there was a lot of changes that we believe are all good for students, and I'm happy to report that all have since settled down. We believe that our traffic pattern is functioning pretty effectively now. I believe that the unit lunch is also functioning effectively. Ms. Mangieri stopped making paninis a couple weeks ago. I did catch her behind the counter making paninis herself, but now that everyone's settled in, I think that the true, that these projects will really start to affect our students' well-being, and the students will benefit from all of them, so kudos to all involved. It didn't matter your title, your wardrobe, what shoes you wore, it was all hands on deck. Dr. Wells was out there directing traffic, along with Ms. Parmley, so it was, it didn't matter who you were, everyone was willing to chip in or lend a hand to make sure that everything got done, so we're in a much better place now. I just wanted to quickly touch on the color run. I participated along with my two sons, it was amazing to see the turnout, not just of students, but faculty and staff, it was a really fun event, and I hope there are more to come. The social studies department already participated in some cross-building curriculum work. Our elementary school teachers have been receiving guided reading workshop support, and for those who don't know, there's a lot of planning that goes on over the summer in schools. So I know tonight, we'll be asking the board to approve our mentoring plan. So our mentoring plan covers both first and second-year teachers, that was an amendment we made to the plan this year, to offer supports for second-year teachers as well. It includes things like peer classroom visitations, setting up a schedule for new teachers to go in and visit classrooms with more senior teachers, and as well as guiding our new teacher orientation program. I believe also on the agenda tonight is to approve the professional development plan. So this is a revision to an old plan that really focuses on empowerment, choice, and relevance, and allowing teachers a lot of control over the professional development which they receive. And also submitted to the state but does not need board approval is our technology plan, which is really a long-range vision for technology use, and it focuses on three main goals in which we developed in the plan, including global perspectives, safety and digital citizenship, and making sure that technology was being used in classrooms in meaningful ways to enhance our instructional program. That's it, thanks.
Sorry, I lost my place. All right, I'd like to open it up for public contribution on any of the listed agenda items. And now, moving on to new business. Mr. Ferraro, can you start us off with number one, please?
Just make the font bigger, and we'll be ready to go. Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Brian Mansfield to an eight-week probationary appointment, effective October 8th, 2018 through December 3rd, 2018, extendable to October 7th, 2019, as a head custodian on step seven of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the PVFT, PVCSD mentoring program as per document number 52/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? I have a brief one. I know when we first put the mentoring program, because there's a small cost involved, the PVFT was instrumental in assuming some of that cost. Is that still the case, or do we know?
The PVFT covers the stipend for the new teacher mentors. The district covers the head building mentors, which really supervises the mentors, and they receive, the mentors receive some in-service credit for the hours they log working with the new teachers.
That's great, because that's usually not done, so terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the PVCSD professional development plan as per document number 53/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Number four?
Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the advisors, coordinators for the building-level clubs and activities as per document 54/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And Dr. Wells, the last meeting, we had a lot of conversation about morning clubs versus not, and I understand that we did implement some morning clubs.
We're trying, we're going to pilot it and see how it works. We were asked a lot, we were asked by many parents, and the principal feels very strongly that this would be a very positive step. There are many students who took part in the morning clubs and were asking, again, we want to see how it works.
Okay, and I think our, our whole facility conversation, I was certainly in favor of intramurals in the morning, because there is no time in the afternoon, but in light, you know, we, we have to keep in mind the reason we changed the late start times, we don't want people getting up too early, and we also don't want our fifth and sixth graders going home at three o'clock with nothing to do in the afternoon.
Yeah, and, and we will have clubs in the afternoon, and in fact, now we have a homework opportunity for all students after school, which is, you know, we wish to, and with a, so we have many things happening at the school, but I think we have to, you know, definitely see how, how it works.
We'd be very diligent on attendance records.
Yes, and one of the things we're doing is an attendance audit of the, you know, how things are going with the clubs in ten weeks, to see what things are.
And it even goes so far as the how, who is excluded, hopefully no one because of the transportation issue.
Yes, yes, it's, it's, that's why I'm saying that we are looking at this and seeing how it works.
All right, with all those caveats, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint the following members, following, as members of the 2018-19 Audit Committee, Mary Ann Gribbin, Barbara Parmley, Joe Polycastro, Amy Sauthers, Stacy Tompkins, and Guy Cohen as alternate member.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
I just want to announce that Ms. Parmley is chairperson of the committee.
And doing a lovely job. Numbers, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Number six.
Resolved to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the PVFT for online distance learning programs as per document number 55/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Barbara got nailed two meetings in a row.
Ralph was here this time, it still came to me. Be resolved by the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, as follows. Section one, a special school district meeting in and for the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, shall be held on December 4th, 2018, at the Putnam Valley Elementary School, 171 Oskowana Lake Road in Putnam Valley, New York, at six o'clock AM, and the polls shall be kept open for voting between the hours of six o'clock AM and nine o'clock PM prevailing time on said date. The proposition herein set forth in the notice of said meeting is described in Exhibit A, attached hereto, and hereby incorporated herein by reference. Section two, voting at said meeting shall be conducted by the use of voting machines. Section three, the clerk of said school district is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of said meeting in substantially the form attached hereto as Exhibit A, document 59/19, to be published in two newspapers having a general circulation in said school district, such publications to be made so that such notice shall appear in said newspapers each four times within the seven weeks next preceding such district meeting. The first publication to be at least forty-five days, but preferably not more than forty-nine days, before said meeting, and to give such other notice as may be deemed desirable. Section four, the school district clerk is hereby authorized to amend notice of said special school district meeting from time to time as, in his or her discretion, such amendment may be required or desirable. Section five, to the extent required by law, the Board of Education shall appoint election personnel to conduct said special school district meeting pursuant to a separate resolution of this Board of Education. Section six, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The only comment, one of the comments I have is, I think we need to not have so many workers at this vote. So that's just one of my comments.
And basically, what we're actually having, the attachment that they kept referring to, is basically saying everything that Jill and, you know, spoke about before, that we're built, we're building additions to the building, that building in the back, we're reconstructing and we're approving the current infrastructure of our buildings, and it talks about the monies that were mentioned before.
All in favor? No, it has to be a roll call.
No, it has your roll call.
Oh, we're all, that's what I thought, okay. Aye.
Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
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 Moving right along to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through 13, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're accepting a donation of electric keyboard to the district's music department from Tiffany Wacassara. I apologize for the mispronouncing name, Miss Tiffany. We're approving practice for the PSAT exams. We're approving additional six assignments for some staff, psychological services for parents, et cetera. And there's a list of the whole staff who is getting involved in this. We're approving hours for the summer work for student laptop distributions that took place to help our students who were getting new laptops and to maintain the laptops that we have. We're approving meetings with the school nurse and the school physician between the two of them. We're approving a health and welfare contract for a student who is attending Haldane Special School, for one of our students who goes to private school, and they get the healthcare benefits from the Haldane School District while they're at the private school in that area. We're approving an educational contract for Mayapack for one of our students who has special needs who will be attending their schools. We're approving a service agreement with the Brigger Security Company. We're approving additions to the substitute tool list. We're approving CSE Subcommittee Chairperson, we're approving the CSE Subcommittee Chairperson, Ms. Taro. We're mending the coaches list. We will no longer have an assistant swimming coach. We're approving meetings for the lunch monitors in the year's school with the school administrators.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic. Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session for the matters of, to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of three particular persons, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular persons, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.